We're going to start our
Okay. Don't do that other thing. Okay, got it.
Work meeting. Start with introductions. Why don't we start in the room here? I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Vance, Corney County Council, while we wait for Commissioner Harold Meo.
Annabelle Hadebeau, Commissioner.
Joe Purkington, Minister.
And Lilia Neville and Alyssa
Right.
Rager also in our Sunset Board Room. Those calling in, would you introduce yourselves?
And this is Mayor Neiman from Paloma.
Good morning. And I heard
County Health Department.
Morning Charlie. Mike Weilstein is with us. Morning Mike.
Hi. Good morning.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Hey, guys.
Morning Sarah.
Teresa Farley, Board of Staff.
Go ahead Teresa.
Teresa Farley, VOC Staff.
And this is Ryan Fadden in Representative Ray Field's office. And this is Sarah Gelsner, State Senator. I can't figure out how to turn the video on.
It's at the bottom of your screen if you hover over the bottom. There's a bar with different options that opens up. There should be a green
Yeah, I see the camera, but it has a line through it and when I click it, nothing happens. But I'm happy to be unseen. I'm fine. I can see you.
Okay, but we want to see you.
No, you really don't.
And then you've also got Dan Rayfield here and Adam Rayfield.
Excellent.
That's Adam.
Kind of figured that one out.
Morning Adam.
Are there any announcements?
Nope.
Okay. Comments from the public? It looks like we have one public with us. James Day, are you with us?
On mute.
All right. Next up, review and approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just one correction. Roman numeral six is correct on consent calendar and then it should be Roman numeral seven for the emergency response team report. So and we will, we may have eight Commissioner updates and nine other if we have anything. So with that there's no chair decisions, so we're at number five. Our work session discussion of COVID-19 and the state budget impact, so I don't know if you want to go. Well, Sarah and Dan decide who you want to have lead off.
We do have the criteria, ways and means here, so on all things budget, I would start with, we're in a lot of trouble. We have to make really terrible cuts. I'm not looking forward to seeing what I need to vote for that Dan puts together. And I don't envy his job and I'm, I trust him. I'm glad he's doing the work and I know he can set the stage for what lays ahead.
All right.
She's really setting me up to fail strong, isn't she?
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
I mean, maybe, I think that for the conversation, Sarah and I have been done this at like some forums where sometimes like on the budget stuff, I'll, you know, kind of talk and then where there's a lot, like frankly, I'm not involved in any of the, you know, the various policies and things that are, you know, shaken and moving right now. Because they've got me kind of tracked away in a separate room. You know, I think from a general overview, if you are watching the current forecast for this biennium, it's down about 2.7, you know, billion. That is a culmination of various pots of money, so that's just not one pot of money. The general fund, I mean, that's your, the new cat tax that was passed. Yeah, that includes lottery, that includes general fund. When you, the cat taxes, you all may remember was something that was used to kind of get our schools to the level of funding that, you know, we believe it should be at, right? And we've been wanting to be at. It was really kind of that game-changing revenue to move things back. To, you know, for a whole bunch of new programming and also getting our student-to-teacher ratios back up. That revenue is obviously down. And it's projections of brand-new program as well. We've never actually been able to ascertain. We don't know truly what that revenue will come in at. It's based on projections and, you know, which are based on, you know, essentially educated guesses. But those educated guesses have the money coming in less, which probably means that we don't start a lot of the programs within that were plotted to be scheduled. And that money really is just going to be trying to keep your K-12 schools, you know, operating at a baseline. And that would be actually, quite frankly, for the last year of the biennium, a big win. I'm sure this is very familiar to a lot of you. When we talk about being short, you know, a billion dollars for the last year of the biennium, the impact in the community is more like $2 billion. You're cutting twice, you know, to get that $1 billion, you know, it's not spread out over two years. You're cutting twice as deep. That's something that weighs pretty heavily. We had really high revenue projections coming into, you know, the short session, which shows that we had about 1.3 billion left over. They were in excess of our expenditures. The, when we came, you know, when we kind of came out of the session, we hadn't spent any of that money. And then you have the new revenue projection, so really you can subtract about $1.3 billion off of the 2.7 revenue shortfall or decrease in revenue projection. Then when you take into account the cat money, that leaves us roughly about a hole of $900 million to adjust for this upcoming last year of the biennium. That is manageable, frankly. It is very manageable. We have, you know, at the end of this biennium, we're still projected to have about $1.6, $1.7 billion in reserves. Again, think about reserves. If you use 500 million of reserves now to preserve programming, it's going to take a billion dollars to preserve that same programming in the next biennium. And that dynamic is really important when, secondly, we talk about what next year looks like. There's a lot of actions that we're looking at. The Governor, you know, will probably look at making, you know, various administrative actions that she can take. And those are still being discussed and looked at. From a legislative perspective, what we are trying to do is preserve employment and, you know, make good, sound budgeting decisions as we walk through. We're not starting a lot of the new programs, or we're delaying some of the start of new programs to basically make reductions in a way that will have a minimal impact to, you know, the, what I would kind of say is the recovery, the bounce back of the recession. And there's the, also the projections on the recession that we're getting, we get up, we've been getting updates about every other week, you know, from the Office of Economic Analysis and they are, they change, right? Three weeks ago, they were saying, hey, this is going to be deeper than the Great Recession, but it's going to be shorter. Two weeks later, well, we're feeling more pessimistic now. And we think that maybe the short-term impact isn't going to be bad, but it's going to last longer. So there is a lot of uncertainty with some of the economic forecasting, which will, you know, color the way that we make decisions, frankly. And some people feel more risk adverse than others, right? Some people would rather use more reserves early. You know, and there's others who would rather use no reserves right now to balance the budget. So there's a wide variety of opinion. We're also, at the same time, trying to gain a lay of the land in terms of, there were 47 streams of CARES Act money coming into the state. Understanding, you know, where those monies go and what is the baseline. A real quick example would be Oregon State University, right? Where the university has received $60 million in Oregon. Half of that had to go to the students. 30 million of that goes to the universities themselves. And you might think to yourself, wow, that's great. They got $30 million. That's not really their baseline. They also lost about $100 million of other revenues, right? In terms of your, your, or the, their residence halls, their food, all of those other different revenue streams. So they're still, their net impact is negative 70 million. So really trying to understand those dynamics, the revenue streams coming in, how we can use various revenue streams. And this is something that is, you know, applicable to the counties and cities. You know, the CFR money that came in initially was you absolutely cannot use it for expenditures that were already in your budget. Then they, there was a period of time where they thought you might be able to use it for, you know, revenue decreases. Now it has come back. You can use it for FEMA match dollars, which is a new and unprecedented thing. So really trying to understand, you know, how we're going to be able to use that CFR money, which still is changing. And in the negotiations with the subsequent federal package could continue to change as the compromises come out between the, in Congress. So those are things we're trying to get a lay of the land of, which are changing. But we also know that the sooner we balance the budget, the less draconian the cuts have to be into the next biennium. But the flip side to that is, if you cut too much, what we've seen in past recessions, that exacerbates or makes worse your recovery out of the recession. And that, and Oregon has occurred. So those are kind of the balancing factors as we go through. I mean, we're, right now, we're just going through in the Ways and Means process and looking for the easy cuts, right? And just tallying those up to see, okay, these are the things we believe we could do. Which do include very, very difficult decisions, Sarah said, in terms of, you know, layoffs and things like that. They are not, they're not, they're not easy decisions to make in any way, shape or form. But long story short, you know, this budget, 900 million, is manageable. When you get into next year's budget, you know, that is going to be a situation where even after you, you know, take a step back, even before we, you know, got into this, the COVID mess, we were still projected to be in a revenue shortfall next biennium. We had made significant strides in kind of correcting that structural deficit. But we're still projected to have a little bit of a deficit. Now layer on top of that, a decreased revenue forecast. That puts us roughly in a hole of about, you know, 3.5 to 4 billion next biennium. That's massive. That's a real problem. And that's something that we as a state, you know, are going to struggle to grapple with. You know, and there's, again, a lot of different variables that go through this. What happens to our case load forecast come September? Do we have, you know, what we expect to have increases in our Medicaid case load, right? When people come off of their COBRA and other plans like that. You know, how does that impact the budget? Are we still getting the increased Medicaid match dollars? Does that continue to come in? Does it shut off as it's scheduled to do? Lot of different variabilities, you know, moving forward. Again, you still have the reserves. There's things that you can do. And, you know, if we were fortunate enough to get some federal assistance, it could make the next two years manageable as well. But they are not going to be easy and the cuts will be deeper than what we're thinking about for this last year. Then you fast forward to the two years out past that, to biennium, and we're still expected to have a revenue shortfall. So the way that we're thinking about cuts is, is this truly a shift in the long-term outlook in Oregon? And if so, that again changes how we view some of the cuts being versus temporary, versus being something that should be, you know, cut long-term in the budget. And those are, I mean, those are discussions that we're, you try and wade through. Do you just hold a position vacant for a year or do you cut it for the five years, which makes managing future budgets that much easier? Because the flip is, you know, the, is the same. So if we cut, you know, one position in this biennium and it costs $100,000, we save $100,000, it's going to save us $200,000 next biennium. That's kind of where we are at right now in terms of just kind of evaluating and moving forward as kind of an overview. And that might be more in-depth than anybody wanted to.
No, I think that's, I think it's good to, there's a lot of attention. Well, that's actually one of my questions. The May forecast that came out last week, I had numerous conversations that this is going to tell us where we're headed. And I was a little more doubtful because of how much we don't know. And I know the May is a quarterly forecast and odd number of years when the legislature's in session, that's a big deal because it's last chance to make your budget adjustments. But in a year like this, isn't the August forecast going to be as important or maybe more important because of better data?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, you're thinking the same way that I am. We, you know, when they are making up these forecasts, they're using their best judgment in the moment. And those, that judgment is based upon various assumptions, right? COVID is not going to come back, right? So there's positives and negatives. I mean, it depends, and those assumptions could go either way, right? There are assumptions based upon how quickly does the economy bounce back, right? There's assumptions on what they're calling pent-up demand and a lot of other things like that. That, I mean, you know, if we reopen too quickly, right? And, you know, things come back and shift a different direction, that's going to have an entirely different impact on that revenue forecast. And I think the, you know, versus, if we're doing the right thing right now, and we'll only know two months from now, right? But if we're doing the right, you know, thing in the nice, slow gradual reopening, you know, based upon, you know, scientific data and our economy gradually bounces back, that's our best-case scenario. But when you hear them talk, I mean, they say that there's a 50% chance, you know, the revenue forecast is up in the fall. There's 50% chance it's down in the fall. Part of the way that I would look at, you know, and there's a lot of different opinions on this, but is because we have the reserves set aside, let's take the easy things that we can do to reduce the budget structurally and also set us up to be more manageable next biennium. Use some reserves, put some reserves aside, and you could move forward with a little bit of a shortfall. The other thing to keep in mind is that if the tobacco tax passes, that'll be in place for the last half of the bi, or the last quarter of the biennium. So there's other different little tools that I think, you know, and then you'd also be in a situation, should the revenue forecast dip more, you know, you have the reserves on hand to be able to, you know, compensate for that. If it's up, well, shoot, you haven't cut as much, you know, and you're in a little bit better of a situation. It gives you a little bit of flexibility, but there's risk with all those decisions, you know, one way or the other.
Thank you. Senator Gelsner has a question.
Thanks. Dan, did I understand you correctly to say that the revenue forecast assumes that we're done with COVID? That we don't have a resurgence? Because I don't think that's realistic.
Yeah, the way that I understand it, and again, I would want to ask them directly because I wouldn't want to, you know, go too far. The way that I understand it is they have made assumptions on how we're going to recover out of this, right? And those assumptions are, and I think the way that I'm thinking about it, where we have a second lockdown, right? So like where we're in a shutdown, if you will. I do not believe that their equation takes into account a second, you know, shutdown the weight of what we, you know, have just gone through. And obviously, you know, and anybody on this phone call, I mean, you could do the math, right? That would obviously dramatically change those forecasts, right? If we did another shutdown again, and you shut down lottery, that alone, right? For the length of period is, you know, $300 million probably.
I just think the challenge is whether there is another formal stay-at-home order or if they're softer in sectors depending on the public health guidance that we follow. The idea that there's any recovery that's anything close to normal, if you think about the impact on our workforce of childcare and schools. And I think the biggest piece of that is, until there's a vaccine, we're going to be telling people that they can't come into an office or go into childcare or go to school if they have any respiratory symptoms, including a runny nose, a cough, a fever for a number of days. And, I mean, you have, you have a elementary school-aged kid. Imagine the impact of that. That's funny, my elementary-age kid just needs. Imagine the impact of that on the population of schools or childcare program and the ability to move forward. So I, I'm just very cautious about the capacity of caregiving workers, whether they are caring for children, whether they're caring for disabled adults, whether they're caring for elderly parents. That infrastructure has been decimated and really faces a lot of risk just because of the public health measures that we need to take. And even school, I mean, I'm not hearing anybody in our K-12 schools talking about a school that starts this fall, which is kids getting up and going to school every day. I'm hearing more of a cohort of a blended online learning, in-class learning, where, you know, different cohorts of kids go to school on different days of the week. And that, I'm not sure what that does for the workforce. Or that people over 60 can't return to work, which is another huge piece of the workforce.
No, I figure spot-on. I mean, all of those things worry me.
Sorry, I just worry a lot lately.
No, and it's so difficult, right? Because you try, I mean, I think the only thing, you know, the way that I, in my mind, that we're approaching this is, you know, you've got to, at some point, you have to make some assumptions. You got to have some, you know, the level of, you got to be comfortable with the level of risk working to those numbers, right? And so if we're going to, if we look at the revenue forecast and, and that's why I said, everybody in that room has a different feeling on their level of risk. Some people feel the numbers are pessimistic. Some people feel the numbers are optimistic. I try and just stick with what the OEA folks say, which is 50% higher, 50% lower. You know, and then how do we feel as a state with, you know, our, our risk level? If you take that as the, you know, and then, and how does that, you know, do you keep more reserves aside, right? But, and I, the other thing, you know, frankly, as I said, next year, I think it is for our state to weather and come out of the economic recession in a reasonable fashion. I think federal assistance is something that is going to be absolutely necessary.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to interrupt. I just had not understood that assumption from the revenue forecast. One of the problems of being dispersed is, I think we're all collecting pieces of information in different forums. So thanks for indulging me.
Dan, you said next year. Are you talking about July 1? Like
Yes.
A month from now?
Yeah, next biennium. I mean, I, it's weird because we'll start making those, start working on those decisions, you know, much, in less than a year, so.
Okay. Anything else, Dan?
I hope everybody's still awake.
We're still awake. It's somber news.
Okay, all right.
And it's hard to assimilate. We have, at the county level, thanks to our CFO, an analysis of funds that come from the state or through the state and looking at 8%, 15, 17% and 25% reductions in those figures. And it's, those are big numbers. And I think part of what's so hard is that they hit in some of the programs that I believe are going to be most necessary to people moving forward. A lot of them are health-related programs, mental health, behavioral health, developmental disabilities. So we have some tough decisions to make all around.
In the, and I'd be curious what revenue streams that you're looking at. That would be helpful to kind of know.
Commissioners, just to point out that Mary Ottley, our Chief Financial Officer, is also on the line.
Okay.
So you could certainly defer to her.
Yes, we can, and I have it in front of me as well, but Mary can describe that much better. We can also probably share our numbers with you. This is just a first cut at what we see, Dan. So looking at anywhere from
Yeah.
4.4 to 13.8 million dollar hit at the local level.
Yeah, it's all good context, like for us, I think. It's just really helpful to understand.
Well, we will, we can share that with you. We'll do that.
I do have a question. Are they going to be selective in their cuts? Or is it an across-the-board type cut? Particularly as Commissioner Ogier speaks, that our, our health-related revenues that we get from the state are very critical, whereas some of our other less critical services could be cut. So I don't know if the state has a plan to look at the cuts by program.
Yeah, and I think that this is, what has gone on has created a lot of confusion. The Governor had, and this was, there's good and bad to it, right, with all of these decisions. One of the, I think the things that people have struggled with, whether they're in an agency or in some of the state government or just frankly advocacy organizations that work on important things, nonprofits. When they saw the Governor's allotment reduction plans, some people, you know, viewed it as that's what's going to happen. And the allotments, for those that aren't familiar, is when the state budget gets out of whack, the, or out of balance, the Governor can, by a very, you know, non-flexible means, basically do allotment cuts. And so what they do is it's just straight across the board, everything. You know, 8.5% to every single program. And you could easily go through one agency or several agencies and say, hey, that wouldn't be very equitable. That doesn't, that wouldn't make sense. And everybody, you know, on board knows that that wouldn't make sense. One of the potential proposals was to have the Governor do allotment cuts. And then the legislature would then come back and add back to the programs we deem most critical. And that was one potential avenue moving forward. The other avenue was the Governor will propose an overall structure. The legislature will propose an overall structure. We'll meet together and figure out what do you think we can do. We're looking at right now, as we are, as we sit in Ways and Means, we're going through, first, we're looking through all of the allotment reductions and the ones that we feel, you know, that we could potentially take. So it would not be just an across-the-board cut. It would be more strategic. From there, there's a lot of things that frankly, some of the agencies don't put on those lists. And other areas where we might be able to save, fund shifts, things like that. And so we're spending a lot of time this week now going back through those different other types of cuts to then get a good sense of what are the easy things. And again, that won't be just an across-the-board cut. It will be more strategic. And I'm sure if you look at those allotment cuts, I mean, one of the things that they came right at was some of the public health money. Right? And that was, you know, so there's, and depending on what stream you're looking at, there's, there's impacts that, you know, you all will feel. Some of the things that were put on those allotment cuts obviously have significant county impacts as well. So those are things we're trying to take into account as we go through all of the various cuts. But it's just, if there's certain things that are, you know, you know, that you're looking at, you know, it's always helpful. For context, Dan, just you were mentioning like the percentages of the budget. For context, you know, we'd roughly be facing, you know, like lottery For context, you know, we'd roughly be facing, you know, like lottery funds, you know, and general fund, you know, we'd be facing close to a 10 to a, you know, 20%, I think about 15 to 20% cut next biennium of, of those resources as well. And in 2017, when we were looking at only a $1.8 billion shortfall, when we were creating our Oregon Health Authority reduction list, and thankfully, we were able to raise some revenue that year, but as we were cutting and going down, one of the things at the very bottom of the list that hit those target numbers was reducing dental benefits for all Oregonians on the, the Oregon Health Plan. And it's not like that's what you would want to do in any way, shape, or form. It's just, at some point, you know, you're trying to prioritize things and get down. And so when you get to those levels, I mean, this is, as you pointed out, Sam, these are real significant cuts, right? But, but again, I, I think that's really in a negative way, but there's, there's some real positive things that we can do to mitigate, to mitigate a lot of those impacts. So I don't want to be very negative 100%.
Yeah, I just am thinking about the kinds of things that we want to do to preserve health and preserve our own personal and community resilience, so that when we are able to go back to something approaching normal, we are in the condition to do it. And I'm a firm believer in social determinants of health, so we need to think about those basic things first.
We need to wrap this up, Dan, but I have two, well, one comment. I really appreciate your longer-term view of looking to the next biennium and the biennium after that, because what we do now definitely affects the future. And the last thing is, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of people are hanging on these, especially the May forecast, but the next one in August may get a lot more attention than usual. What's the best way for people to get interim kind of details of, you know, changes in the forecast that come in the interim?
There, there really aren't any, you know, between those, those times. We're just kind of somewhat being kept, we were kept in the loop leading up to this because there was some broad decision-making and wanting to have everybody with the same level of information to hit the ground running. Between now and September, there's not going to be a whole heck of a lot, you know, at least that are planned at the moment. Our, I think what we're trying to do is get, you know, have something a little bit more predictable from the state, you know, perspective in the next, you know, you know, month, month and a half, you know, something like that. So that way, you know, whether it's the community colleges or whoever, at least has a little bit more predictability from the state level.
Okay. I do have one last question.
Okay.
As you well know, Dan and Sarah, we've been working on our criminal justice systems improvement project, and courthouse funding is something that we still care deeply about. We understand that the planning dollars that we'd been planning on for this biennium may be in jeopardy because of these cuts. If there's any chance of holding on to even a portion of those, we would be really happy about that. We don't expect that the planning in this biennium will be as expensive as we had originally thought. But we're also, of course, even more concerned about the bond dollars moving forward, and we have been working with OJD and want to make sure that you're still aware of the fact that our project is moving forward. And we look forward to updating you further on that as it proceeds.
Okay, we'll use that.
I, I think that, that's one bright spot with bonding right now, is that the rates are extremely favorable. And that, I've heard numerous folks, you know, and myself included, think that, you know, the bonding is one way that, you know, we can continue and move forward on. So I think that it will be helpful in this process. But it, but again, as Sarah points out, I mean, there's, you know, it, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty in, in the way we'll be operating in the community too, but.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Why don't we use this as a transition to Senator Gelsner?
Thank you. So just a, a couple of things I wanted to weigh in on, not being the person at the budget point, but chairing the Human Services Committee, which means that many of the services that I'm concerned about and working on the impact with really do flow down to the county level because you are the, the kind of service delivery point for that. I think one of the challenges, and you really saw it in the allotment reduction exercise, where the Department of Human Services had to do that 17%. So every entity had to do 17%. And you are looking at an agency that is not particularly well-funded. That is not the fault of our, our co-chairs. It's just, it, it never has fully recovered from the last great, the last two great economic dips in the early 2000s and again in 2009. We still have struggled to get our direct care workforce up to livable, appropriate wages. And I think that the, the wage equity issue is one that's become even more pressing and clear in the course of the COVID-19 crisis. The people that we expect to continue going to work and taking the, the risks of exposure to significant illness are the very same people that we pay less than $15 an hour to have close personal contact with very high-risk people. And, you know, for me, I think that that is something that we need to be paying very close attention to as we move forward. Not relevant to the county so much, but, you know, I think for me, one of the starkest examples of the connection between economic justice and the social determinants of health is the issue of the rules for form of housing. The idea that we are delaying a bunk bed requirement by, by three weeks, and that the argument is that the cost of apples or strawberries might increase, to me, as a person that eats apples and strawberries, I have to ask myself, is it okay with me that a child I don't know could lose her dad and, you know, grow up without a dad just so I can pay 25 cents a less a pound for my apples? And I think this, this crisis has really given us a pretty brutal, un, you know, hate to use this phrase, it's a little political right now, unmasked look at the way that our economy really does disproportionately impact people and how some of us that are very privileged really have advantage based on expectations we have of people that put their lives and families at risk. And many of those people are working in these human service programs. If you look at that 17% allotment risk, I was bombarded with people saying, how can the governor do this? How can the agency do this? You know, and there were terrible things on that, that list, completely eliminating in-home services for medically fragile children who would, as a consequence, either die or live in a hospital, which would be more expensive than a, than a cost shift. And what's hard is for people not to panic when they look at these things and to recognize that we do need to come back, I believe, and have a special session and, and have more targeted reductions. That doesn't mean that there isn't going to be pain and really negative reductions that will harm people. But what I have been asking stakeholders to do as we move towards our June legislative days next week, we'll be having hearings, is instead of stepping forward to say, don't cut my program, this is why it's important, to really be reaching across stakeholder groups to look at how their programs intersect, and try to figure out how people can step back from self-interest and look at how, self-interest from a particular program point, and look at how all of these things overlap with some of the same people. And how do we create the best thoughtful looking forward system? And as Dan said, if this is a new normal, if we're looking at, towards a new structure of services, how do we smartly build that? So I'm asking people to come with ideas of what we could trade or modify or change, and what, if that happens, in exchange would need to be really protected or, or beefed up or, or built up. I've been asking people to submit those things. We've got a, a policy Human Services Committee meeting next week. Everybody wants to talk about budget. I've asked people not to talk about budget because we have a lot of policy and practice issues, and frankly, lived experience issues within that population, because human services are all about, oh, hi Sam, I'm on a thing right now, sorry. Human services are all about direct services and human contact. So, so much has changed in the way that that's delivered. We've had issues of lack of access to care for elderly people and people with disabilities, and we really want to highlight some of those, those types of issues. But I have asked people to put their budget issues tied to lived experience into the, into the OLIS record. The other thing that we are working on, and I'm working closely with Fairbores, is to look at, to the degree that we have new programs that we're going to go into place or things that they cannot comply with under the social distancing guidelines, what are some of these small things that are non-controversial, that we can hand-in-hand say, okay, we need to delay the implementation of this thing rather than seeing what was done in the past and have government just try to work around the edges? And then you end up with what started as a good policy, but it's all messed up because we didn't put it together in the right place. So we're trying to create that non-controversial list of things that simply could be delayed. Could also save some money, but also goes to the list of how do we practice? But I think to the degree that your developmental disabilities programs, your mental health programs, have issues, day-to-day operational issues that are challenging because of some statutory flexibility that they don't have in this time, whether that's the way that face-to-face visits are, are, are made, or hours are counted, or, you know, supported employment is, is counted as an hour of service delivered, it would be really helpful to know those things within the next short period of time, so that we can get those things moved forward. And then the, the last thing, well, two last things. One, for these populations of people, I, first of all, I'm really proud to be from Benton County. I think Benton County has done a great job, both in terms of our public agencies and the private providers that have contracted with them, to be incredibly creative about keeping people engaged in the community while they are at home. And that the creativity, the innovation, the thoughtfulness, to me, has just been a source of pride. And I think the local emergency management agency, all the videos and social media that, that you're doing with the different interviews every few days, I think that has been incredibly meaningful at helping people understand what is expected of them and how they can help. Not every county is doing that, and I just hope that's something that you all take a lot of pride in. And I, I think that that relates to why our numbers in Benton County are low, because just people are being communicated at in respectful ways from lots of, lots of different directions. And then the, the last hopeful positive thing, because everything around is so depressing, I'm very worried about a resurgence, as I mentioned earlier, and, you know, how our workforce is going to move forward with the combined restrictions of caregiving and who can't go back to work or back into the community in, in Broadway. But, you know, a lot has been made, and it's really true. Our employment department has really struggled. We have people that have not gotten money. I'm working right now without staff, so I'm doing all my stuff myself. I've got about 300 constituents, where I have walked with them every step through their employment process, and it's been very frustrating. But not only have they started to receive their benefits, not enough of them, there's, I've got a big list that's going to be done today, but the new question that I'm getting from these people is, what do I do now because now I'm back at work? And the speed with which people across different sectors, it's been interesting to follow people through their unemployment claim journey because they're all in there for a whole variety of reasons, the, the pickup of returning to a regular paycheck is a lot faster than what I had anticipated. And I don't know, you know, as we look at maybe the 50% negative, 50% positive, the negative variables are, we've never done this before, we don't know if the virus has come back. The other variable is, we've never done this before, we don't know how quickly people get back to work in this situation as opposed to in a different type of economic recession. What we really basically had was a great pause. It wasn't that some industries were advantaged over others, we all stayed home, we didn't spend very much money, none of the businesses were operating, and, and now people are going back forward. And I think the long-term impact of, once people get their benefit, the $600 weekly benefit, is really going to help people not fall so far behind. But that's just me as a non-economist watching what's happening to, to folks that I'm working with here.
Thank you, Senator Gelsner. Do we have any questions?
I would just say, thank you for looking carefully at how services are delivered on the ground and what's practical and what makes sense to do moving forward. And I hope that you will get a lot of feedback from people in the field about what, what would be wisest to cut and what we can leave whole, so that we have resilience moving forward. And I thank you also, on behalf of our fantastic staff, for the compliment about our communications. I agree, it has been wonderful. And it has, I think it's made it a lot easier for our community to heed the governor's executive orders. I'm fine.
Okay. Well, I'm, I really appreciate both, both your efforts. I assume Representative Ray Field is still with us, but Senator Gelsner?
I am.
We are amazingly fortunate to have two people in the positions that they are in the legislature, and I know you're, I know you're working hard, and we really appreciate that and look forward to continuing this conversation. I guess one last thought is, I think Dan mentioned it in passing, but just how important the federal government's role is on us moving forward. And I assume you, you two are in contact with our federal partners and whether it's getting clarification on how existing money can be spent, or hopefully, there is additional resources headed our way to help us all get through this. But I, we can't say thank you enough for your wonderful efforts, and I think we'll leave it there.
Pat, I have one more comment, if I could. Just wanted to make.
You don't have to turn it on.
Oh, that's right, I don't. Duh. Getting used to this stuff is crazy. I'm assuming you, you have all heard that many of the counties have gone together to work with the members of Congress to try to get some dollars from the, from the federal government, and particularly those rural counties in, in eastern Oregon. So just wanted to give you the heads up on that. Don't know where it's going, but we'll see.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing whether the House measure at the federal level will move over to the Senate and actually gain some traction at some point, so that states, counties, and cities actually do get some funding to fill the budget holes. I know, Dan, you alluded to that already.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know how they're going to ignore us with how persistent everyone is being, but, you know, anything is possible, I guess.
Yeah, it's a very interesting thing. I agree. And the National Associations certainly are very active on this front, and they are bipartisan.
Well, again, thank you, and we will probably be, be in touch soon. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You too, Dan, Sarah.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
All right. Next up is number six, the consent calendar.
I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along. Item seven, discussion of Emergency Operations Center. I know we have Charlie. Is Danielle or Brian with us?
They'll both be joining us momentarily.
Okay. We are slightly ahead of schedule, which happens every once in a while. If you're ready, Charlie, why don't you start the update?
All right, thank you, Commissioner. No, no great dramatic updates, fortunately. That's, that's a nice thing to say under the circumstances. We had a good session late last week, just reviewing work in progress. Many of our, most of our contingency plans are at or very near completion, although we never call them fully complete because circumstances change, there's always tweaking to be done. So we continue to watch and go back periodically and review those things. But basically, the, the type of things that... and review those things. But basically, the type of things that we were looking at is mass casualty, preparedness, morgue overflow. Those plans are in place. Fortunately, we have not had to use anything like that so far. Mobile testing sites, these are pop-up testing sites, so we're ready to do focal testing at a workplace, at a geographic location, anywhere where we suspect or have indication that there is an outbreak. And so both the equipment, the facilities, and the personnel for those have been identified. It's a strongly collaborative plan. Alternative care site, this is the hospital overflow in the event that the hospital approaches or exceeds its capacity. Of course, they have capacity on the hill to expand into day surgery and other facilities that are used otherwise on a routine basis. This is assuming that things get so bad that those elective surgeries and things like that are canceled once again. But we also have a plan to move beyond that at this point. We have a commitment from OSU to be able to use one of their residence halls. That is only going to work until August 9th. At that point, OSU is moving towards doing their preparations and cleanup for the fall. And so we're working with some other facilities to have, again, that contingency plan through the remainder of the fall and winter. And those plans are underway, and we've reactivated the planning team to make sure that we have that plan solidified well before the OSU's drop-dead date comes along. Behavioral health plan that Danielle and Ashley have been working on, she can explain a little bit more about that. This is complete and ready. This is a huge advantage that we've got, this crisis response. It's always been there, but having it written out and well-structured, and Ashley's done a terrific job. With that, contact tracing, again, we have about 26 people trained now. They are county staff. We are not using any volunteers or community members at this time. We deployed county staff. The state has its basic training component in place, but all of our people were trained before that. So as we need to transition, if our current staff return to their normal activities or are unavailable for this, we do have, we've been directing community members to the state contact tracing registry site where they can get the basic training from the state or indeed be available to other counties. We have directed a number of local people to Marion County. They've had a hard time keeping up. And so we do have some local folks who are helping out up there. The isolation plan for COVID-positive people who cannot shelter within their own homes or do not have a home, there are three RVs on site, I think there's just three now RVs on site at the fairgrounds. And Lynn has been terrific in helping to set that plan up. So we do have housing available. There are many more RVs that are available under contract that we can call as needed. And then the mass care plans, again, that goes up to alternative care site and caring for more people than we need in the event of a local surge. So all in all, I hesitate to use the word, but a relatively quiet weekend. So far, so good. Situation, as I said before, somewhat normal, although normal now is just responding to the pop-up problems which just continue to occur. And so EOC is back in operation today. Danielle is down there, so I'll let her take it up from here.
Go ahead, Zan.
Charlie, I have a couple of questions for you and Danielle as well, I suppose. The first one is, can you tell me a little bit about the level of cooperation with Oregon State University? I, in many ways, view the return of students in the fall as the wild card in terms of virus load in the community as they come back from multiple different places, and we have a lot more people here in the county. The other is whether or not there are any additional results from the OSU TRACE study, and when they, if you know when they might be expecting to put out the overall results of their four-week study here in Corvallis about prevalence of the virus.
Great questions, Commissioner. So Brian Lee, Dave Busby, Dr. Thompson, myself have been meeting with OSU leadership regularly. We're continuing to do that. There are plans, obviously, underway at OSU, but we are all awaiting the governor's higher ed guidance before we can move ahead with anything more firm that was anticipated to come out of the Higher Education Council and through the governor's office last week. I checked at about 8:00 this morning, it had not been posted yet. So until we have that, I know, you know, OSU would like to get some summer activities underway and then get planning for repopulating the campus and moving things forward in the fall. But really, our conversations at this point have been somewhat aspirational and theoretical, looking at ongoing surveillance and testing potential on campus, collaboration between our Communicable Disease Program and OSU Student Health Services, which has always been exemplary as far as case, you know, moving that up to case identification and assistance with contact tracing. And so there's active conversations ongoing there. And we're actually going to form a couple of sub-work groups to do some of that specialized training and use the current group as sort of the overseers of that. Regarding TRACE, they actually suspended operations because of the relatively low prevalence discovered in Corvallis. They decided to wait to do their last round until later in June, till around mid-June, really to take a look and see what, if any, effect that reopening and beginning low-level remixing might have. And so thinking that one or one and a half incubation cycles might indicate whether or not we've got spread in the community. They are planning, at this point, they're hoping to expand over to Bend this coming weekend, but then wait on their final round in Corvallis until later in June.
That sounds like an excellent idea. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
I had a question for you, Charlie, on the mass casualty. Is there, I guess, I'm wondering about our capacity, thinking about floods in Michigan last week. And, I mean, we have a lot of attention focused on the immediate COVID problem. What's your assessment of our ability to handle a small to medium other event?
I think it's actually very good. So we have current capacity, as you know, with the hospital and the mortuaries is under a dozen deceased bodies. And we have now a capacity for several dozen more in the temporary facility, but it is in place and operational and basically can remain that way indefinitely. So we are prepared to handle several dozen more casualties.
Good morning, Commissioner.
We never have to use that.
Sorry, Charlie.
Go ahead.
This is Danielle. So when we were creating the plan for the mass casualties, we bought a container, and we expect that that can contain about 60 deceased bodies if it comes to the need. We bought shelving and everything that would need to be managed. So as Charlie was saying, we do have capacity for quite a few in the event that something occurs.
Okay, great. If there aren't any more questions for you, Charlie, why don't you continue, Danielle?
Yeah, thank you. So the only update I would have to Charlie's is around the behavioral health plan. We did do a press release about two weeks ago for the additional behavioral health support services that we're providing. At the end of last week, we had not received any referrals, but we are leaving that wide open for people to be able to access that resource as needed. So that's the only addition that I would have to share in addition to what Charlie had reported through.
And for your information, you missed about two minutes of the start of Charlie's report, so you didn't miss very much.
Danielle?
Yes.
The one question I would have for you is, have you been able, you and your staff, been able to maintain the level of collaboration that you previously were engaged in with the jail staff through this period of time?
Yeah, that's been a little bit more difficult because the jail has been closed and we haven't been able to go in to see people. But what we've been doing is coordinating for phone visits for individuals that are either requesting services or the jail identifies as needing services. So we are, we're still supporting, we're just doing it telephonically instead of in person. We also did get a request from Sheriff Jackson at the end of last week to help support the reopening of the courthouse and help with the contact tracing, contact information gathering for public individuals that are accessing the courthouse. And we've coordinated for one person to be there. We've reassigned one staff member to help support the courthouse with the potential of a second one if the need arises.
Thank you.
Great. Is Brian Lee on the phone with us?
Yes, I am.
If there's nothing else for Charlie or Danielle, I think it's your turn, Brian.
Okay. So, morning, everyone. Just, Charlie actually covered a lot of the stuff pretty thoroughly there for the EOC update. In terms of just general staffing, we're still, I'm going to say minimally staffed here. There's about 25 or so employees here from both the city and county. So again, minimally staffed. We are really keeping a close eye on things as we get ready for phase two guidance to come out supposedly this week sometime. One update I wanted to give you guys regarding the PPE for farmworkers, Oregon Department of Agriculture, Oregon Department of Agriculture and the governor's office pushed out a lot of those K and 95 masks for agricultural workers in our area as well as all the counties. We were going to help with that, but we came up with some, I'm going to say logistical and legal concerns, and so I backed this out of it. We are still going to, that PPE is still available to them, and we are going to provide them with some simple masks or those kind of procedural masks if they need them, as well as cloth masks if they need them. But basically, the bottom line is there is concern about giving K and 95 masks to farmworkers who then might wear them out in the field. And then they are respirators, and they could have respiratory issues because it stifles their breathing, especially when they're doing physical or manual labor. So we were really concerned about that and the liability. There's a lot of nuances in the messaging from OHA regarding that, which was basically, well, if you have respiratory issue, you know, you don't wear it. But we're concerned about that not being clearly communicated to that population in appropriate languages and everything else. So I did not want us to engage in that, but we are still going to support that community with anything they need. But we're not going to facilitate that with the state necessarily. So the state and OSU Extension is still giving out K and 95 masks, respirators specifically, to agricultural workers. So I just kind of want to let you guys know that we're not leaving them high and dry by any means. Sheriff Jackson was very much like, let's make sure we get the masks and get them anything they need. So we are definitely going to follow through on that. I just wanted to let you guys know that we are not doing the OSU Extension piece. We received, we ordered-
Brian?
Yes, go ahead.
Joe Kirby, I just wanted to make you aware that just received an email this morning from Carolyn Ashton with OSU Extension and indicating that those masks are available through Lynn County's distribution network. So just so you know, they did take another path and went to Lynn County.
Yep. So those still are available, it's like Wednesday, 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's going to be over at the Lynn County Extension Office if our farmers in our area want them. But there's still some caution there. Couple other updates. We ordered three paper units. They're basically like a really, really, really nice respirator system for healthcare. And we got three of them, and we got them in, so we're ready to go there in case we need them. I'll work with Charlie and the clinic to see where they want them deployed or where we want to hold them. But we do have those, which was a really nice addition. Other than that, we've been monitoring our metrics with OHA. They're doing a really good job of communicating that with us. We don't know all the pieces. Charlie was saying, it's not 100% clear they're calculating all the metrics, so it's hard to make any corrections. If we have concerning metrics, that would be something like a 5% increase in cases or an inability to track all of our positives or anything like that. So more to come on that. But we're keeping a close eye on that as best as possible, and we're talking to hospital daily about their search capacity, numbers, PPE status, and all of that. Just a follow-up on the grants. We did submit the Bureau of Justice grant and the CJC, which is, I believe, the Criminal Justice Grant. That should be submitted by the end of the week. And those are mainly going to be for the decontamination units and some other support equipment related to the decontamination units. I'm sure folks saw, in terms of the phase one process, we got some business guidance kind of squared away that we're going to be pushing out and getting translated this week. But generally, businesses are pretty much open. I don't know how much everyone went out, but people were out and about for Memorial Day, to say the least. I saw trailers and boats going everywhere, crowds of people at so many stores. I noticed in Benton County, we're doing a pretty dang good job of wearing masks and social distancing and being pretty responsible. I will say, since I lived in Lynn County and just moved to Benton County, Lynn County was not doing so well. So there's, across the board, people were just out and about, not wearing masks in Lynn County, and people were traveling everywhere. So I only say that to highlight that people are not self-isolating anymore, and they're starting to go about their business. And I'm sure Charlie kind of touched on it there, some concerns about it being, quote-unquote, back business as normal. I think that could catch up to us here. But we're going to keep a close eye on it, and we are working with OSU a lot to have conversations about what the fall will look like with students coming back. And I believe they have not received guidance from the state yet for higher education. But we are going to be monitoring that, communicating very closely as we move into that phase as well.
Okay. Brian, recently, I guess, before phase one really opened, you had talked about being able to give guidance to businesses to let them know how to physically set up their operation. Has there been much use of your expertise in helping businesses?
Honestly, there has not been. We set up a phone mechanism and online mechanism to capture that, and we have not had a lot of questions. The state did a pretty good job about putting out guidance, and then we adapted some guidance from Lynn County to suit our businesses. And again, the Economic Development Group and some of the, just other organizations have not received a lot of pushback or questions from businesses. A lot of it was just real basic, like, where do I access the information? But otherwise, businesses are taking it upon themselves. But otherwise businesses are taking it upon themselves. Most of them again are doing really good and there's a lot of self-policing going on. So not, not a lot of folks have taken us up on any requests for support or guidance or anything else. But we're still going to make that available as much as possible, especially to rural communities who might need it. Like if folks don't use the internet as much or anything like that, we're ready to print out copies and get it to them, hand-deliver them, whatever we have to do to support them in reopening safely. But everyone else seems to be taking it pretty seriously and, and doing just fine with it. There was a little snafu of course with the, you know, that we covered last week with the Baker County Circuit Court rulings but for the most part, everyone still was very compliant and it's understanding the importance of, of doing things right.
Well, great, I, I really appreciate that the county was ready to help local businesses with their questions but apparently got, got their answers elsewhere. But I, I think that was a great tool to have available. Any other questions for our EOC folks?
Not at this time.
I don't have any, no. You guys are doing a great job. I think that, that's
Thank you.
That shows up in terms of the, the response from the community, I think is, is very, this community is very, this whole Benton County community is very responsive and really caring and, and yeah, there's a few folks that, you know, don't believe that, that anything serious is going to happen but I think we've helped, helped a lot in, in keeping it, keep, keeping the curve, flattening the curve and keeping it down.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And just to touch on something that I heard Commissioner Malone asked Charlie, in terms of our preparation for all the other disasters that could hit us, it is definitely, I know Dave and I and Sierra are very much focused on that piece because there is a little bit of a lull, I'm not even going to say too calm, I don't want to curse it, but it, it has been a little bit quieter which is a reminder that there's other disasters that we face. We saw flooding in Michigan and in Texas that was catastrophic. I mean, there's still other disasters that are going to happen and then it's just going to be complicated by the COVID situation that we can't shelter everyone or, or that our resources are stretched thin. So we are very much aware and I would agree with Charlie's assessment. We're very actually well-prepared and honestly, it's because a lot of the folks who have been through the EOC right now, if we had a fire or flood, we could adjust and still do similar operations. And everyone is sort of in a flow and already in a team setting together and we understand how the process should work in a perfect world. So I, I think we're actually pretty well positioned to handle other disasters that may come up. It'll just, you know, be another layer of complicated with the COVID-19 situation. But please don't let us have a catastrophic earthquake, that would be very nice.
I wish we could control that Brian.
Me too.
Got a note here from Eric Diamond, the mayor of Flometh and agrees that the EOC has done a great job. PPE collection efforts have been great. So I, in case that didn't show up on your screen, I thought I would pass that along and thank you Eric for
Yeah, thank you.
Joining us and commenting. Well, I think that's it, you can get back to work and, and thank you all for the update.
Thank you.
Next up, it doesn't actually show up on the agenda, I don't think, but number eight, Commissioner Updates, if there are any.
I don't have anything.
I just wanted to let you know that I have been in contact with our colleagues over at the Cascades West Council of Governments about the Stand By Me program and have a conversation scheduled for later this afternoon with Randy Moore to talk a little bit more about next steps. What we realized was that the COG staff were very fixed on the framework of the scope of services that we put together under the original transfer of funds to them. And it doesn't, that scope of work doesn't necessarily make sense at this time. So we, the fact, I told them that there's no reason we have to stick with that if it doesn't make sense, we can modify the scope of work. That's up to them and us. So we're going to talk a little bit more about where they are and what does make sense and what would give them more flexibility to actually be able to launch the program moving forward. And then I'm sure that will circle back to Joe and to Mary and to Vance so we can figure out whether we need to make, what modifications need to be made.
Okay. I think the only other thing I have is our city manager's meeting is at 1:00 this afternoon and it's set up as a go-to meeting. So Eric is still there, you can sign back in at 1:00 Eric.
Commissioners also to underscore, you don't have to be in your office, you don't have to be in the conference room, you don't have to be in this room, you can be at home, wherever you want. So we're not intending everybody to gather for that go-to meeting. We want to continue to do what we can with the social distancing aspects. Also to highlight, tomorrow there is a meeting between the commissioners and county council. That meeting is an in-person meeting down at the Board's Office on Fifth Street.
That's tomorrow, right? Yeah.
You may call in if you
Sure.
But it is, just like all the other meetings except we'll be farther apart. There's enough room in the Board Meeting Office to accommodate the six of us if Joe shows up. Definitely five of us, but yes. And if you're not comfortable, again, you can, you can phone in.
Technical thing, are these not working? Because I've had my computer plugged in and it just went out, it said, but your battery's gone.
Okay.
Meaning the electrical outlets?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can check that after the meeting.
Yeah, check it out, yeah.
Is there anything else? Vance?
I have two things. One, I am participating in a video meeting with the Rural Fire Chiefs this evening. They want to talk about the 911 district, the Executive Advisory Board. I sent off the intergovernmental agreement between the 911, you guys as the service district and Corvallis to the organizer of the meeting and I sent the bylaws that are coming to the CSD on June 16th to him as well so that that, I'm sure will be the primary topic of conversation tonight during this meeting. Both myself and Nick Sasseman will be participating in that video conference, so.
Nick Sasseman?
Did I say Nick?
Yeah, he said
How about John Hurley? Nick Hurley and I. While on the BCSO, CPD and Flometh side of the ledger, the Executive Advisory Board bylaws went pretty smoothly and make a great deal of sense, I am certain they will be met with some questions from the fire chiefs. So I'll, I'll let you know how that goes tomorrow.
Great.
The other thing is, I'm going to, I'm, hopefully will be there at 9:00 tomorrow if I'm five minutes late because I've got a blood test, so.
Okay.
Cholesterol medicine for crying out loud.
All right, well, I think we're at the end of our agenda for today. Our next board meeting is Thursday, May 28th at 10:00. And I assume we're back here.
We are.
Thursday.
At sunset is, in case you didn't know where here was.
Here.
All right, well, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.